How you doing, Peter? Doing okay?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Still struggling with shop insurance company and and work going on on our house, but we're here. Our dog died. Our oldest dog died. She was fifteen and a half. And another one who's seven and a half.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
It was really tragic. Anyway.
Sad.
Here I am.
Okay. We have to wait for Barry for a quorum, right? Or one of these guys?
Yeah, correct. We'll need one more commissioner for a quorum.
Yeah. So, Peter, Lottie's not gonna be here today. Excuse me.
So you're running the show?
I have to run. I have to read script, basically.
Keep us on the line.
I can do that.
So we need the other two to, at least one of the other two to have a meeting. So we need Barry, yes?
Yeah.
Or Fireball?
Yes, one of the two.
Yeah. Yeah. They're just getting coffee. Do we have anyone scheduled today? Any outside people coming?
I did tell Eduardo.
Oh.
He was planning on being here.
Is that about the concert?
Yes.
For peace or for call?
Yeah, the call to peace.
And here he is. There he is. Oh, and here's Fireball. Oh, great. Okay.
Barry's hit a stretch for incredibly busy.
What's up, guys?
Good morning, Tim.
There you are. Okay, great. Oh, and good, and Barry too. Okay, great. Now we can start.
How's everybody?
Pretty good, thanks. How are you?
Good. I just made it in by the, my chinny chin chin.
Yeah, good, because we were waiting for a quorum. Lottie's not here today, so I have to read this little.
Oh.
Read the script.
Okay.
Might as well wait for Barry. I saw him.
I see him there.
I see here now.
He's still hiding.
Okay. Hello, everybody.
There you are. Okay.
One question I had was, I know last night they canceled the city council meeting because certain parts of Malibu were without power, so people couldn't attend. Is, Jesse, do you know if the city's powered up again?
I can't speak for every section of the city. I know we always try to wait as late as we can to make that call, obviously, depending on what areas are out of power, but I don't know if we're fully back up yet. Just off the top of my head, I haven't heard yet this morning, but I know they'll usually put an alert out when we're back up, and I haven't seen that, that I'm aware of. Are you, Kristen?
I'm just wondering if, just for formality purposes, we have to do what the city council did, because not everybody could get in, not that anybody ever comes, but you never know, you know?
Yeah, so I know that, and I don't put together the council meetings outside of a staff report, you know, one or two staff reports per meeting for city council, unlike this one where we actually put it together, but I don't know if that's a requirement. I think it's more city council does it just for, an abundance of caution, I guess you would say, Tim, you know, just to give everybody a chance, but I don't know that it's necessarily a requirement for them to do that. I just know that they typically do. But if the commission feels that way today, if you'd like to postpone and do it a different day, and I mean, the meeting started, but we could certainly, certainly do that, but.
I just drove like hell to get back here from the airport, so I'd like to do this meeting.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Also, you now have a Tesla roof.
Okay.
We had power.
Well, great. Then can I call the meeting to order?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to call to order the Malibu Arts Commission regular meeting of November 23, 2021. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate the Zoom meeting process. Commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibucity.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either watch, just watch the meeting, or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibucity.org/virtualmeeting. Please make sure you visit malibucity.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Commissioners, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call it on you in turn, so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. Okay, so now, I guess we have a roll call?
Yep. Commissioner Hardeman. I'll come back then. Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Jones is here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Didn't hear that one.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Vice Chair Holland.
Here.
And Commissioner Hardeman.
Here.
Vice Chair Sharon, sorry, Chair Sharon and Exefizio Clifford is absent.
Okay, okay, so I guess we have the Pledge of Allegiance now. Okay? Okay. I, can we just all start? Okay. And go. I pledge the
I pledge allegiance
to the of the United States
of America.
And to
the Republic
where which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and I think we just saw Graham come in, so that's awesome. Okay, so can we get then approval of the agenda soon?
Just need a motion in a second, and we'll do a roll call second.
Okay, I'll second it.
I'm sorry, can I get a clarification? Who was the motion from?
Who made the motion? Was that Peter?
I said approved.
And then I said
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardeman. And then Vice Commissioner Hardeman with the motion, and Vice Chair Holland with the second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Hardeman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so report on posting of agenda, ceremonial presentation, none. Written and
Brittany, if you excuse me, Vice Chair Holland, Brittany will actually give a report on the posting of the agenda briefly before we move on.
Okay, so how do I do that?
She will just give it.
Oh, Brittany will do it. Thank God!
The agenda was posted on November 19, 2021.
Okay. Great. Is that it?
Yes.
That's it.
Great. So on the agenda is ceremonial presentations, none. Written
Correct.
Correct. Written and oral communications from the public?
We do not have any public speakers. Mr. Stossenor is speaking under item 4A.
Okay. And the ad hoc committee reports, so first is arts and education. Kristen, do you have anything?
Yes, our poetry workshops will wrap up here, or have wrapped up, and we are working with Webster Elementary School for in-person workshops at the beginning of the year, and as well as in-person workshops at Malibu Elementary School. So it's going great. All the teachers really appreciate Ricardo, Mean Chavara, and Jolynn Regan coming into the classrooms and teaching kids about poetry. And with that, we also published the anthology at the end of the school year, so we're just getting all those agreements in order and submitted.
Awesome. On that note, actually, I'm coming in as to Malibu Elementary to do the big holiday program, so it's not through the Malibu Arts Commission, but that's another, you know, thing in education, so. And so Malibu Public Art Exhibits. Fireball?
You start.
Okay, okay, I'll start. All right, so Fireball and I met five artists on last Friday. I guess it's, you know, it took us a while to get there, unfortunately, close to the end of the run, but it's beautiful down there, if you haven't seen it, and Fireball was really amazing, doing interviews, and spent a lot, a lot, a lot of time editing these five videos, so I just want to commend him for really his time above and beyond, you know, to put this, his, you know, time into this. And I hope that we can continue this even more, even have staff or interns, like, be able to do this, because it's really a great thing to have, to see, if you haven't seen it on, you know, it's up on the Facebook page, the one already, and, you know, it's just really great to see, talk about their work, and, you know, their their process, or why they did this, or whatever, you know, and that, and I think we'd really like to continue that, because I think it gets really, get people involved. So I think that was really great, and it's coming down soon.
Yeah.
So they'll be picking them up, and then we'll be ready for the next one.
Yeah. Thank you, Julia. I appreciate that. I think it's important that, and just to keep this short and sweet, but, you know, we're asking, and I said this to Kristen yesterday on the phone, we're asking these artists to put their faith in us, and that we will promise to do certain things, you know, we're gonna do our best to do other things, but we're, in having the gallery there, our goal is to create awareness for them. That's it, you know, versus just have a space for them to put their stuff up and bring their friends, show their friends. We want to build this gallery as being a professional gallery, and the only way to do that is if we make promises that are slightly outside of our comfort zone, so that we can do some of these things. So I think that, you know, doing, although if you want to have interns doing the videos, I don't mind doing them. They are a certain amount of work, but I want them to be as professional looking for them as they can be. So if you hadn't had a chance to take a look, I think, Kristen, you're gonna put up one a day? This week? Okay. So I don't think we're gonna do all the artists. There's probably not gonna be enough time to do that and coordinate with them before the gallery ends, but I think as a standard, we'll probably do this with the upcoming photography show and different things, so.
Yeah, and maybe start earlier on in the run, so we get everybody in right there.
Growing pains, growing pains.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are these, are these the artists that are currently in the, in the city hall, or I missed a beat?
Yes.
And is it possible, you know, we have this, these, these two things. One is the Facebook page, and the other one is the webpage for the commission. Can we put that up on the webpage as well? Because, like in my case, I just have two things going, so I'm not on Facebook, and I'm just wondering if people go to the webpage, they'll at least get a taste of what we have, and is that possible to do?
Certainly. I can add that to the homepage on the commission's website, no problem.
Yeah, because if we had a, if we had a kind of a backlog of artists, even after it comes down, you could list up certain artists. I think it'd be a great thing to show we're continually doing things, you know?
I agree.
I think that's a good idea. Good call. Let's do that.
Julia?
Oh, yeah, Peter, I'm sorry. I forgot. I forgot. Yes, Peter.
There is a website for photography called Loyda la Photographie, which is published every day in French and in English, and they maintain an archive of everything they publish, and if you subscribe, you get access to the archive. And some of it's great, and some of it isn't, but it's all there. And if we're gonna start making videos of the artists, I think we should start archiving them. These will be available for future reference.
Yeah.
I believe the public for free.
Yeah, well, as a side note, you know, I'm gonna keep, you know, I never throw anything away, so in all the videos that if we happen to not get something up, but later on, we realize something's missing, we can easily access that stuff. But I agree with Peter that we should have an archive that people can search easily, and it gives something to the artists in perpetuity, so that they can always send people to the site and show what they did six months ago in this particular gallery.
Is, did you get many, because isn't City Hall kind of semi-closed, or what's the story? In other words, did you get any traffic for the thing because of the physical constraints, or?
I know some of the artists did say that they, you know, they brought their families through, and they brought, you know, friends through, so it's, I think it's open down there during regular hours, just Monday through Friday. Unfortunately, it's not open on the weekends. That's
No, we did, we did have, we have an article that's coming out in the Malibu Times Magazine. It's just on whatever their schedule is, so I don't know exactly when that's coming out. It might come out after this particular gallery is closed. But regardless, it's still good, you know, for us as a gallery to be able to have as much press as we can. I think the Canyon News wrote something about it, but we've, we haven't really been that aggressive, simply because there have been some protocols in place that have prohibited us to do certain things. The next show, we're gonna do a reception, so that's, that will help a lot, and as long as we can, you know, do what we can do, and constantly try to expand a little bit each time, get a little bit better at it each time, then we should make progress.
Good.
Great. Okay, awesome. How about Barry and Peter, business and community outreach, anything new?
Really quick, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, sure.
Commissioner Lawrence, can you also provide an update on the next exhibition?
And, oh, yeah. Sure, I wasn't sure. I thought we were going to detail on that later. You want me to do that now?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. The next show, we were gonna be doing Tony Dow, but Tony's, he had some concerns about the limitations that are happening in the gallery, and he wants to be able to invite art critics and a variety of things. So what we did was, we switched Tony for Tom Fritz, who is an automotive painter. Some of you may have seen him extraordinary, and he was more than happy to fill that space and to rotate them. So Tony said he's gonna come to the show and kind of feel it out and see how it works, which I get. You know, he's gonna be spending upwards of $20,000 to put together his art and his sculpture, and he didn't want to do that unless he knew that it was something that would make sense for him. So he's gonna kind of feel it out, and, but Tom, his pieces are all available. They go up, that show will begin December 11th, if I'm not mistaken, yeah. So that weekend before, his work will be delivered, the guys, you guys will get it up, and we will have a reception, an outdoor reception, which will be nice. We'll do, we'll have a car show there, so we'll bring some cars down from the museum and invite people stuff, so it might be fun. Yeah, thumbs up, baby. And then we'll do a Q and A with Tom, so I think that as a group effort, the best thing that each one of us can do is to let people know that that's happening, and we will limit it to about 75 people, and then we'll have a protocol in place to, no more than 10 people at a time in the gallery. Is that correct? Okay.
Correct.
So, but, yeah, let's just concentrate on what we can do and do that, you know, and let's get the ball rolling. It works, yeah.
Can I ask a question? Is there a way that we can make sure that the city manager in his report promotes this? Because I'm not sure, I've seen anything like that, and also, can we put that up on our website? And finally, is there any other way to get to all of Malibu? I guess it's just the emergency things, right? We can't, we can't send out some kind of a notice of the opening of this gallery. In other words, I think it's, we really have to get it out there.
We can, we can. It's, you know, there are certain media that are available. I mean, I know that the Malibu Times has switched regimes, but I can reach out to Arnold. I know those guys are friends of mine, so I can reach out to them and at least maybe get that. I just needed to confirm a couple of things with Kristen before I let those guys know. Barbara wrote the thing in Malibu Times, so I'll reach out to her. There's no Surfside News anymore. If anybody knows anybody at the local, that would be good.
And I'm sure we can get it out on the Malibu Mag, that digital thing that they send out every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the, the city manager's report is another thing that comes out every Friday, and then it should be up on our, not only your webpage, I mean, our webpage, as well as your Facebook page, but our webpage. I think we've got to use the webpage a lot more to promote things, so we get everybody the best way we can.
Well, Barry, just as an affirmation, webpages are great, but unless people are aware of them, then the webpage doesn't serve any purpose. So our goal really is to create awareness in every way that we can, by word of mouth, through social media. That's what social media is, to drive people from Facebook to the webpage. You know, I'm gonna call, as soon as I confirm with Kristen everything, I'm gonna call the mayor and make sure that he's there. I'm gonna, and that he spreads the word to his, you know, the people at the, at the realty place. You know, let's just do everything that we can between now and December 11th to have people show up.
So it's December 11th, is that the date?
Yeah, like one to four, I believe.
Right, right.
And that's gonna be the reception, right?
Yep.
Because I can talk to the, the the local businesses and see if I can get them to spread it out, because it's a good thing for the Chamber of Commerce to say to its people, I guess.
Yeah.
And do we have any, do we have a budget for any postcards or anything like that, that we could leave in businesses that people could look at, or?
I don't think there's really enough time for that. I think, you know, unless you wanna Xerox, you know, just go to CBS and put some flyers out, but honestly, that's, the amount of work it takes to go through that process, we can hit 20,000 people in Malibu on social media in a matter of a half an hour.
Yeah, if we're limited to 75 people, that's, that's really
Yeah, honestly, if, you know, if we do this the way that I would normally do it, I'd have 7,500 people there, and we don't want that kind of stuff, you know, and so we have to be cautious. You know, I can't just put it out there to all the people I know who have cars, because we'll have 100 cars show up, and I don't, I don't want that, so I'm gonna be strategic and call people specifically and say, hey, I want, I want maybe 10, 10 cars there at the most. And I also want to reach out to those people that are willing to share, the people that have audience, that, you know, that they will let people know, not necessarily to come to the reception, but that the gallery's open, and that they, after the reception's open, that we have some traffic, you know, that we're not just limited to that reception day, but that we actually get people in the doors over that period of time that it's open.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as you know, I think we've all experienced, you get, often you get the most traffic the opening night, and then it dribbles in after that, so maybe you might even consider having a piece of paper or a flyer in the gallery, so people who come in can pick it up, know a little bit about the artist, and, you know, it might encourage them to walk around a little bit rather than just conduct city business, you know what I mean? That's another way to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we are getting our sign, it'll be, should be put up by then, I hope.
Oh, cool, cool.
Yeah, we have, thank you, Kristen, for doing that. So Kristen bought letters, and we're giving those letters to the artists, and I'm taking a few. I think Julie's gonna take a few. And we're gonna paint those up. Those will be installed before the show begins. It says Malibu City Gallery in big block letters right in the lobby, so that'll be kind of, kind of fun to have, at least. Yeah, no, a lot of great ideas, Barry, so we're gonna implement as many of those as we can in the timeframe. So if you think of anything else, you know, let us know.
Yeah. Also, just real quick, quickly, Commissioner Hardeman, we have included it in the city manager updates, so they've changed a little bit in the last six months or so, but they come out every other week now. So we posted an update prior to the opening of this exhibit, which was in the October 1st update. So we do, we are including them in there. Just, just to let you know. I know that was one of the, one of the ones you mentioned.
Okay. Any more questions? Can we go on to next?
Well, can I just speak for a second? Well, just wanted to say that I've now been to two openings in Malibu. One at the, one at the Getty Brentwood, and the other at the Getty Villa. The Getty Brentwood was Titian paintings and Rubens paintings at the villa. The shows are spectacular. What is interesting from our point of view is at the one in Brentwood, there were about 250 people there in what was a vast room. You're aware of my wife's, you know, my situation, so we went late, so that began to clear out. There was dinner served in bento boxes, which happened to be chicken and vegetables and potatoes and things. Most of the people ate first and then went to the exhibition. We went to the exhibition first and ate later, basically alone. Eating was outside under heaters. At the Getty Villa, there's an open space in the villa, if you haven't been there, and that's where dinner, which is, it's basically a square of which the edges are covered there by the 20 feet of covering, and then there's a space that I'm gonna guess is 100 by 100 feet, which is open, and that qualified as outside, so you didn't have to wear masks there. Everyone who went into either exhibition, who went into the, sorry, went into the villa exhibition, because the law had changed, it was after November 4th, had to produce a vaccination card and a driver's license, and also be checked in as having RSVP'd to the exhibition. So in theory, every single person who was there had been fully vaccinated. And the whole thing, both times went off without a hitch, and everybody had a very good time. So they went overboard and it worked, and so I don't know, we're not gonna be serving dinner, obviously, but also the tables were spaced about 15 feet apart. There were mostly standing tables. So people were not encouraged to sit and re-breathe air. It kept people moving. They really worked on this, and they pulled it off, so that's just what I wanted to report.
Well, you know, we're certainly gonna try to get a portion of that. I don't, I don't think necessarily that we have the budget that Getty does, but with, you know, it makes sense that, what's nice is that our gallery has a parking lot right outside, right in front of it. And we talked about having some kind of signs or creating a sign later on that would, that people roll up and park in the lot, they can look and they can see that there's a, that that's the gallery right there. There's no question as to where it is within the building. But, you know, some of these things we'll work towards, but for, for what it is that we have now, and doing an outdoor reception, that's, and doing it small, you know, and it's a test bed. There's gonna be things that work really well, and there's gonna be things that suck, and I think that we want to refine that and get better at each time. So, Peter, it's very valuable that you go out and look at these things and bring that report back to us, because that gives us an idea and certainly faith that people are doing it successfully, and we can just follow their protocols. So it makes sense.
If this were the Getty, they would require, they would regard the front door of the exhibition as the driveway to the parking lot, and you would check in there before And you would check in there before setting foot in the parking lot. That's how they would approach it as opposed to checking in before walking into the building. Now, that's their approach. It exceeds the law, but that's their approach.
Yeah, I, I think the only, the only hiccup would be, you know, asking certain people to, to go down those stairs to get to the gallery. Um, that might be problematic for some. I don't know if there's an elevator in, in our building. Is there? Okay. Um, well, that's, that's really up to you guys. I'm, I'm open to, you know, Kristen, if you, if you feel the protocol in place or it makes sense to have the reception on the top versus at the bottom where the, right where the gallery is. You know, that doesn't really matter to me, but, uh, we can talk about it and, and figure out, you know, uh, with Julia and figure out what, um, what makes the most sense. Okay?
Fireball, is the gallery on the, on the first floor and not on the second floor? Is that the way it's?
Wait a second, Barry, you haven't even been to the gallery yet?
No, I haven't. I didn't realize it was open.
Dude, you're, you're on the shit list. Okay, yeah, no, you gotta, Barry, gotta, you gotta make an effort and go to the gallery. I mean, I think it's really important.
No, I will. I didn't even know was you, you were up yet with all the, I figured the city hall was kind of closed. So it puts you off, but, uh, anyway, so I renewed my question.
Well, it's not limited to that. Right now it's on, on the bottom floor, but I don't think, it's not limited to that.
No, there's space to, to grow it upstairs along the walls and on the top floor. So we definitely wanna entertain that for sure.
Okay, good. I will go to Sweet.
Okay.
Yes, go soon, cause it's gonna be down.
Yeah.
Um, can we move on?
Yeah.
Great. So, um, Barry and Peter, Business and Community Outreach.
Um, I can take this and, and then Peter can chime in. A couple of different things. The, this is gonna be the bane of my existence. The insurance issue remains a problem. I've got a very high-powered broker that I use in the entertainment area, who is, who is, uh, going to several different insurers about insuring these, these, uh, pictures in businesses. And the problem that, that he's encountering is that there are several different venues, uh, at once. It's not just one place. So each one has their own security issues and each one has their own hanging issues and all that kinda stuff. I'm, I'm not gonna give up on this. So, uh, I'm, uh, continually trying to get it, cause that's the key to making this work. Uh, so, um, uh, I should hear from him sometime this week or next week, cause he's surveying a lot of, uh, he knew exactly what I was talking about, surveying a lot, uh, you know, he's surveying several insurance companies that they deal with. Um, during the, the course of the, 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 um, since last time, I visited a couple of different galleries. One is a pop-up gallery that's on top of the lumberyard that, uh, just went in. And, um, uh, and I, uh, you know, talked to them at length about how they arranged it. They've actually rented for, I don't know, two or three months from the landlord at a, at a discounted fee. Um, and it got me to thinking that, um, uh, if we coordinate the city gallery, perhaps we can also do a pop-up gallery, uh, in some of the space in Malibu with a different kind of exhibit, because yours are up for a while. And, uh, you know, pop-ups tend to come and go, but at least it might give artists some opportunities. So just to gather information, I've started to call the names on the signs of the open spaces to find out if they would consider a pop-up gallery if we wanted to do that. And I don't know the logistics of whether the city of Malibu would rent it. I guess they would and all that stuff. But first of all, I wanna see if there's any interest in doing that as a, um, uh, even, even some of the art you couldn't get into your gallery maybe might spill over or something, but we should obviously coordinate so we're not in competition. But if we have two or three galleries in Malibu, it seems to me that's, that's not a horrible thing. Um, I also, uh, uh, spoke to the assistant city manager. And she explained to me that, um, the, the city has all of a sudden got, uh, just like the state of California, got more, um, taxes in than they thought, so that the budget is loosening up a little bit. So she encouraged me to, um, if we wanna add some programs or do something, we could do that at the January meeting of the city council. So I would urge that between now and our next meeting, we come up with some proposals, if any, to, uh, to further things where we've been maybe limited, if any, way by the budget. Um, one of the, one of the proposals that I would like to circulate is the following. Um, uh, and I'm gonna steal from somebody back, uh, back east, but, uh, my, my wife wa- went into a gallery where they asked photographers to submit pictures. And this could be anything. It could be a painting, a picture, whatever, that, uh, would evoke a story. And, uh, so the first exhibit would be the story and then people would be, uh, would be asked to write either a story or a poem or something like that to go with the picture. And then there'd be a second reception where they'd read their stories. And I, I think if we got the poet laureate involved with getting, say, poetry about what's up on the walls, I think it could be quite an interesting exhibit and we could get two bites at the apple in terms of people attending receptions. And so I'd throw that out to be considered and maybe people can see what they think. But it sounds to me like it could be, if I could, if we can find a venue, it could be a terrific way to go. Um, and give both poets and artists an opportunity to be exposed. Um, so that's, um, let's see if I have any bit of thing else.
We did have a little, you know, Ann Buxey already has thrown that idea around and she wants to do it. And we did talk to her about possibly at the next public one, you know, not these, obviously these two single exhibits, but the next time we have a call for, um, you know, a larger group of artists, that we also do that. So that's kind of in the, um, Fireball was worried that we would have to, um, also promote those, uh, po-, you know, those, uh, writers as well, but those poets as well. But, um, I don't think maybe that's the case, but we can maybe try to incorporate that in, in another public one.
Yeah, Ann said that we, we didn't have to promote the poets.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
I'm just not necessarily sure, you know, I, I would think that the poets would want that. But if they don't and she wants to handle all things with, with regard to the poetry, I'm, I'm, I have no problem with it. Uh, Barry, my, my only concern with the idea, I just wanna address one thing you had mentioned, with the idea of creating pop-ups and wanting to have two or three galleries. I, I think that, that to me at least, and maybe, maybe some of you guys disagree with this, but, uh, that, that to me seems a much longer-term plan, because, you know, I, I wanna put my head into making this gallery a success. And we've had only one, and the idea of dispersing ourselves throughout Malibu and doing a bunch of other things and creating multiple galleries without necessarily having proof that this gallery really works and it's successful and it'd be easy versus, uh, I, I think it's more of an uphill battle to try to get people to understand what it is that we wanna do and get them on board versus you do something very successfully, people naturally just, just come to you and say, hey, we would like to do that, what you guys have created, but we don't wanna do it over here. And then they'll take the reins for that. So I'm just trying, I, I, I'm concerned about my time and being able to give as much of that time to, to this commission. The idea of, of adding onto that more, more gallery shows, cause I mean, you know, Julie and I are ha- handling the, the public art exhibitions and I guess we would have, we would have a, a, a hand into some of that as you, you know, with what you're doing.
Yeah, we'd have to coordinate, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus we'd also have to staff it and I'm not sure, I mean, that's one thing about being at the city hall. There's really no staff necessary. People can just wander in and do it, so.
But, but I think, I'm not saying no or that's a bad idea. It's certainly a good idea and we want to expand. But I, I think we really want to make this gallery for this year, you know, to take this year to do this gallery and make it kick ass so that it, that people know about it and that it's successful. And we're actually doing for the artists what we say we're gonna do. And, and hopefully the protocols change to allow us the freedom to do some of these things.
Um, well, I, I, I think I, I agree with that and I think that, that I, I don't wanna take away from the work you guys are doing at all. I think that given the nature of what, some of what you're doing, which is featuring one artist, et cetera, um, this is a kind of a escape valve for a salon approach to a gallery. So that, um, uh, like for example, if my favorite space would be the open space next to the Ralph's Market, which is a small space, we'd get a lot of traffic, you know? And, um, uh, just, just to introduce them. But obviously, we don't wanna take away from, from what you're doing. And if anything, maybe we'd have one other that would amplify the two galleries in a way. You know, if somebody went into the Ralph's thing, they might not have gone up to the city and then we have a promotion for, and by the way, if you like this, we have another gallery up at the city or vice versa. Um, they might, they might complement each other. And, um, you know, it's still in the early stages, but I think that it's something, uh, at least I'll finish and see whether anybody's willing to do it and then we can make some command decisions.
Yeah, I don't, I certainly don't wanna snuff it out. I think, you know, expansion is good. My, my only concern is that, that, you know, if you go down Rodeo Drive or you go to Laguna and you go to some of these high-end galleries, they, they don't have pop-up galleries. They have their gallery and they focus and they drive people like crazy to their galleries and they make a name for themselves worldwide. And that, and I think that, at least that's how I'm trying to approach this gallery. I want the Malibu City Gallery to be an international gallery that meet people, will make the effort to come to this place and to experience this and in, in every way that we can. And a- as cool as a pop-up is, or, you know, I, I tend to look at pop-ups as being, you know, temporary, limited and, and over, a lot of that kinda stuff. But I just don't know whether we wanna, we wanna get into that, into that business model or whether we, um, quite, yeah, someone has a question down below.
Yeah, Graham?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm, jumping in here, I just wanted to say, I agree with Tim completely. You know, over the years, the, the commission has put up many exhibitions in the city hall, but it never, it never attracts a lot of people, because people don't know it's up, as Barry just acknowledged.
Right.
Yeah. And, and I would, I would, I would focus our attention on what Tim is trying to do, which is to get that gallery recognized, even within the, even within the confines of the Malibu community. And, but, and also Barry, you brought up something interesting. You've men- mentioned the salon series. Years ago, we did do a salon series, which was very successful. It was one of the most successful things we did, uh, uh, over the years. And I wouldn't mind, you know, me seeing that come, come back to life. I mean, uh, the, um, Jesse can tell you about it. It was very.
I agree. I thought it was wonderful.
It was really, really good. And we, and we had a lot, and we had a lot of people. We, we were oversubscribed for every single event that we had and, and we had to turn people away. We, we, you know, we were visiting people's studios and, um, like Lita Albuquerque before she got burned down. And it, it was just incredible and, and a to- totally 100% popular. And I don't quite know why it stopped in, 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 in memory now. I don't know why, why it came to an end, but it was, it worked really well anyway. Anyway, I'm getting back to the city, getting back to the city gallery. I fully support focusing on that 100% so that we can actually have people know it's there and it's open.
Yeah, and, and naturally, I think, you know, if, if we do it right, then, then people will, um, uh, you know, uh, natural expansion will occur. You know, there'll be opportunities to, to do satellite places, to do pop-ups or, or whatever we see, we see fit. I just wanna make sure that we maintain a level at that gallery that is equal to the professional galleries that exist in the world or surpass that. And, and, and honestly, we're really far from that right now. We're, we're not.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, we're not there yet, but, uh, we certainly want to. Um, Kristen, I had one question about the, the limit of amount of people. The 75, that number, was that something that came from the city council? Or was that something that you guys decided was a safe number?
Um, we, based on kind of our space here, we thought that it's 75 would be a number that people could still remain distant and safe and we're not, you know, in danger of a mass super-spreader events or something like that. And, um, you know, if people didn't, the ideas to RSVP to go into the gallery, um, so if people didn't RSVP, we could get them in with no problem.
Okay, so, but, but, and, and I mean, 75 is a goal. We can't necessarily control flow or turn people away. But if we, um, if we do it right and just kinda spread the word that we're limiting to 75 and we can get those, those names or at least move forward with, um, that kinda structure. Okay, I, I just wanted to kinda get an idea that.
Clear. We're telling you about 75 people in the gallery for the entire opening or 75 people standing in the parking lot?
Parking lot.
Parking lot.
Yeah, only, only 10 people in the gallery at a time, um, or whatever you guys feel is, is appropriate. But, you know, obviously, we don't want 10 people to go in for an hour. You know, we want 10, we want a limited amount of time that they can experience it and, you know, that's.
Uh, yeah, for me speaking.
Yeah, I agree.
We have two parking lots available. We also have a road available. Um, and if we can manage it, I would love for people to be, people tend to like to linger at openings, especially if there's food and wine.
Yeah.
And they tend, if you go to an opening at the Getty, people run in there. They're there for 15, 20 minutes. These are very knowledgeable people.
Yeah.
At the Titian one, they stayed and stayed and stayed, cause the show was so astonishing. But generally speaking, that is not the case. And the interior spaces in the Getty are vast with very high ceilings.
Yeah.
So a lot of stuff we don't have, although we do have a two-story space. Um, but, uh, if we could open it up to two parking lots, we can definitely accommodate anybody who wants to come and that would be a nice thing to do. It'd be terrible to kick people out.
Yeah, I agree.
Or say no.
Well, the, the upper lot is, is pretty significant. You know, the upper lot is probably, can probably hold a couple hundred cars. It's, it's a pretty good size.
I agree.
Yeah.
Too.
Yeah, the lower lot is not, not as big, but, um, uh, it seems, and I think just as a, you know, presentation for me is very important and I, and that when people first roll up and they park, they're gonna see the entrance, a, a much more significant entrance at the top than they would at the bottom. And even if they have to go down the stairs or the elevator, uh, we can, we can make some kind of nice entranceway on the bridge and, and, and I think I'm kinda warming up to that a lot more. Julia, if you, anybody, any thoughts about that? But Kristen, maybe, you know, we can talk afterward and kind of, um, what, what was your, your plan, guys? For, uh, Kristen, for you guys to, to have any kind of food, what, food and drinks, what was the plan for that?
Um, we were just going to do some kind of art hors d'oeuvre or something similar to that. Um, okay, no wine, unfortunately, just, you know, water, lemonade, iced tea, coffee.
Okay, okay. Well, like I said, let's, let's do what we can. So does that, does that make sense, Peter?
It does, but I have a quick question. Uh, are people, uh, and, uh, able to bring their own wine? Can they bring their own glass of wine? Just asking, for example, and I, I used to, uh, be involved with the Center for Creative Photography. There's no, there was no liquor allowed on campus.
Yeah.
They got a variance so they could have wine at the openings. Uh, is there a prohibition against liquor inside the city hall and outside the city hall? I just wonder what the law is.
All I know is that if, if you're gonna bring wine, you better bring enough for everyone.
Yeah, and I don't know if you wanna, I, I don't know if you wanna have a BYOB party that may bring down the gallery.
That's not my, what I'm getting at. What I'm getting at is what's the law?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a law? Is there a law, Kristen? I mean, we could, you could always get like a vineyard to come in as a tasting.
What I'm thinking is a vineyard could do a tasting.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
There's a whole issue on driving.
In the past, what we've had to do is get insurance, of course. Insurance is always a thing. Um, and we've had to bring in, kind of the city rule is security has to be present anytime you're serving alcohol. So those are the two, the two things. As we've also, the the artist, if they wanted alcohol at their reception, they would provide that. The city never purchased alcohol.
So what are you are you open to to having a a wine tasting or have a vineyard there, set up a table and and do a wine tasting that doesn't require uh your interns or security?
I, that's kind of our city rule. Anytime we bring in alcohol, that's, those are the requirements that kind of go by. Just things have happened in the past that haven't been.
Well, yeah, but security, in your security, you're talking about one or two people for three or four hours. So that shouldn't stop you. I think the attraction of a wine tasting just adds to the attractiveness of the whole thing.
Well, let's 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 talk about, you know, Kristen, let's afterwards, let's talk about budget and see what, you know, what's going to be spent on this as is. And then what would it mean to 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 add this component? And if it's too much within the budget to handle, then we can shoot for maybe the next show or or you know, and I, you know, I'm I'm all for, you know, we do gallery openings all the time for the museum. And and I just want to make sure that each gallery opening is a little bit better or a little more unique than the last one so that we can we can work into these and people have a new experience, a fresh experience each time they come. So I think all of this is a great idea.
Yeah, there's a lot of vineyards, though. I think a lot of people, a lot of good wines that would do that, I think.
Uh, for sure. And just I just wanted to underscore the one point I wanted to make, which was between now and next time, let's think about if there are any other bigger plans we want to do that we would approach the city council to potentially increase our budget, even if it's to expand the gallery opening or it's to do something else. But I think we should get creative. All they can do is say no, but if we don't ask, we don't get, you know?
Barry, on that subject, uh, I would love to bring in a lighting consultant and update the lighting in the gallery. And also, uh, my house, uh, you can now buy what's called museum film to put on the windows. It's completely clear and it eliminates all ultraviolet light. And if we did that, we would be able to greatly increase the credibility of the gallery.
I think that's right.
It's something approaching museum standards.
Yeah.
I've got the contractor who can put in the the film. Um, and we can, God, there must be a thousand lighting consultants in Los Angeles who can fix the lighting in the gallery. And we we could establish a one-time cost for that. That's something that might be really worth doing.
Well, Peter, maybe you should work that up uh for the next meeting since you have the contacts. And and then that's one of the items we should suggest because we'll only have, I think, one meeting before the city council meeting. So we're going to have to kind of throw out those ideas and decide on what we want to go for rather than just a blanket request for more money, you know?
Oh, no, we have to be, we have to come up with a number.
Yeah.
This would cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think the film would be good uh at a minimum.
Yeah.
We have fluorescent light in places in that in that space, which is pure ultraviolet light.
But let's move on. I'm seeing dollar signs flying out of Kristen's ears right now.
Yeah.
That's all great, great stuff.
Yeah, let's move on. How about, uh, Arvind, let's use social media.
Uh, real quick, so you know, the 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 goal with the social media is to be able to populate it on a hopefully on a daily basis. That's what the videos were for. If you guys, if you guys go to the gallery yourself and you take a couple of pictures of the gallery just for yourself, make sure that you send them to Kristen so that she has a a um a plethora of stuff so that Brittany can get stuff up. Um, we obviously want to take, I don't think we need to ever hire a photographer or any of that kind of stuff. I think that all of these candidates are important between the media that comes and takes pictures at the next reception uh for ourselves. If we take pictures, that all that content should be earmarked for the Facebook page. Um, we've figured out a way to uh not just tag us but to share on each other's profiles. So we're still working out some of the kinks there. Um, but if you have a Barry, if you don't have a Facebook page, I recommend that you get one, even if you don't necessarily use it for that much. It's one of those things that, you know, once you start using it, then you start to see why.
That's what I'm afraid of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I think it's it's all it's all coming along. And um, uh, but the number one type of comment, uh, con- content that gets shared more than anything else is video. So that's why we want to populate that with as much of that as we can, so that's it.
And they were amazing. All the artists were just so great.
Yeah, they're awesome.
Okay, can I go on? So I think the next one is number three to approve the consent calendar, right?
Correct. Yes, we just need a motion to approve the consent calendar as a whole. And we'll do a roll call vote.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent calendar minutes and all that?
So moved.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, perfect.
Um, just to clarify that for the public, that was Vice Chair Holland with the motion.
I think that was Peter Jones with the motion.
That was Commissioner Jones with the motion and Commissioner Haldeman with the second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Haldeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Vice Chair Holland.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, great. Okay, so now we're at old business, and we have a call to peace. Okay, great.
I have a brief staff report.
Okay.
Um, so this item is being brought to the commission for, and this is the second consecutive meeting. And Mr. Delsey Norris here, if you have any additional questions for him after I give my staff report. So, um, we discussed this at our last meeting, but Call the Peace is a local foundation. And Mr. Delsey Norris works with various charitable organizations here locally and provides performances at different venues around the city of Malibu, as well as in Santa Monica and other other venues around Los Angeles. Um, Mr. Delsey Norris is an attachment to the staff report and provided proposal, which the commission requested last meeting, and he wants to hold a concert on um May twenty-second at uh the Malibu United Methodist Church. He also provided um some letters of reference for the commission to review as well. And this concert will be free to attend, but um they will accept donations. And um, can I get the next slide, please? Uh, his request to the city included um using some of our resources related to creating imprinting um program brochures for the concert. Um, he asked for a financial contribution. There wasn't a specific amount. But he did ask for that to pay his artists and use of the city logo just as a sponsor. That's what he would include in his program.
Now, what do we do now?
Sorry, there's one more slide. So due to the um request from Mr. Delsey Norris, this would require a city council approval. Since commission is a recommending body, we would recommend to the council for approval um, the use of staff's time and resources to create those programs and use to the city logo. And then we also just wanted to mention to the commission that funding for nonprofits is usually provided during the city's grant program. And that program uh opens early twenty twenty-two, so we'll probably have that information up on our website in January. And the whole process so that admin committee through council reviews all of our applications. And then awards are announced in spring. Um, so that concludes our my report. Happy to answer any questions. And as I mentioned before, Mr. Delsey Norris here, if you have any questions for him.
I see his hand is raised. Eduardo, do you have any?
Yes, I have a, it's a a correction. The date is May twenty-first. Can you hear me?
Yes, May twenty-first.
Yeah, it's a Saturday because it was written there on the screen, May twenty-second, but it's just on Saturday, twenty-first.
Great.
Um, I have, I have a couple of questions. Okay. Um, number one, uh, of Kristen, uh, and actually could whoever's, maybe it's Eduardo.
Where is all that background noise?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, uh, I'm in a place that I'm.
Okay, good. Uh, Kristen, um, I was concerned with your statement that any grant has to be approved once a year by the city council. We're we're given a certain budget. Are we? Does that mean that every time we want to spend money with our budget? Or even if we spend it on a nonprofit to to advance the commission, uh, we have to go back to the city council or we have to wait a year? Or it seems to me that's a very impractical way to run a business.
So we do have a budget for various things that the commission wants to do, such as art exhibitions. Um, uh, if you want to do a film here, if you want to show a film preview, but those are kind of commission-related, city-related events.
Right.
We kind of put this on a different level since it is uh a call to peace event. So and it's not being held at a city facility where it'll be at the United Methodist Church. So kind of puts it in a different bracket.
Yeah, if I can, I can jump into, I I think the the distinction here, Commissioner Haldeman, is i- if it's if if it's finances, city-approved budget that is to be used for a program or an event or something that's commission or arts-related in this instance, that's okay. It's more that the commission doesn't have the authority to give away or or give money to outside organizations like that um from your budget. It doesn't, it doesn't work like that where you can give money or financial donations to to an outside group. That is typically only done uh by the city council with city council approval, and that's done through the grant program each year. So um, if it's something where and and what Kristen was trying to explain was if we had a city program or if we wanted to co-host an event here at city hall, for example, and they were um coming into city hall, we could purchase supplies for the event or we could help with some of the promotion or things like that. But we don't typically just give cash um from our budget, and that's something that the city council um just does.
Okay, that I understand. So so i- i- if I understand this correctly, one of what we could do, assuming we wanted to do it, is we could purchase posters for them or we could do some social media if we wanted to or those kind of things. We just can't give them a cash grant. We can, we can funnel it into spending it on things to support it, but not, but but they would have to not be a cash grant to the organization. Is that kind of what you're saying? So that we could do, the one of the things I saw in the proposal was that you wanted to do posters or you wanted to do uh some things to promote it. Can we spend our money directly on that?
So in in the case of if we're combining on an event, right? And and something that we're doing here at city hall or at a city facility or it's a city-based event, um, typically, we would work to do that uh within the budget. In this case, um, it is a touch different because it's it's essentially an outside event. So promotion, things like that is is certainly something we can assist with. Um, if you're talking about us printing materials and things like that and using the city logo, for example, we would need to get city council permission for that because it's not, it's not really a combined event, I guess I would say. You know, this is an outside event that's taking place and they're they're asking for ways we can support them. And the way we can support them is with those things, but we would require city council approval on that stuff.
Can we support them on our social media, you know, say, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
We are, we would like you to attend this concert. This is for, you know?
Absolutely.
So if it doesn't cost money, we can support it. Is that correct?
Correct. And and like I said, the the one tie here is i- if you want to use the city's logo, for example, to promote it, we do, we do get city council approval for that. But yes, the commission, and we actually encourage this and why we have the commission website that um is separate from from what we do on our city website, is that we can help promote these things. And the commission can call for artists or or promote it through through our our social media as a you know, if we have a a link to their page, we can certainly link to it. And and yes, I guess is the answer for that.
So that it so that we could, so we could theoretically at the next council meeting, if we could get it on the agenda, we could get something like this approved individually. But we'd have to go through it because the city's putting its imprimatur on an outside organization. And uh they they the council has to do that because it's speaking for the city. Is that that's basically the concept, right?
Correct. And so, um, you know, I know we have a commission logo. And so if the commission wants to support it as a commission, that's okay. But yes, with the city logo and and essentially you're saying, hey, we're going to spend um, city resources and city staff time and and stuff that's not just promotional, um, but actually us actually going and doing that work, that's the type of stuff where if we were to do that for every event that we we got a request for, we'd, that'd probably be our only job. But yes, that's why we have city council go through it so that they're aware of it and it's all above board.
Jesse, uh, could we, let's say there's a music program and let's say it's four pages uh that accompanies the concert. That would, uh, would we be able to put that on our website and make it printable? Or print it on the website or the Facebook page or both and make that printable so that people at home could print it out before they went to the concert? Uh, and they, so there would be no actual financial cost. It would have the Art Commission logo on it, but not the City of Malibu Mo- the Commission logo. Would that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But in other words, we can't spend it, we can't spend any direct money on the event. We can just support it. And it would be up to us to just just verify the event ourselves by these. For example, I would like to know what percentage goes to the Emily Shane Foundation? What percentage goes to the, I think that's important because we are, even though it's the logo for the commission, we are speaking for the city in a way. So I think it's up to us to vet um a little bit more than just say this is where the money's going to go without more specifics uh like percentages or something like that and how the how the artists will get paid, which Eduardo uh mentioned in his proposal. Um, you know, then I think we have to vet that a little bit more.
But I would agree with Barry. I think we have to vet that a lot. You know, I mean, that that kind of stuff is, you know, it's very easy for to write a check to something and then Bunny can go to a whole host of things and we don't, we don't control any of that.
That's right.
It's best for us if there's a list of things that they want to have done and there's a cost to them that we can, we can pay, we can support that by saying that we have a budget to support you and we're going to give you money to do this specific thing. You know, if if the artists get paid, maybe the artists get pays paid to us. Maybe we send, you know, you know, I I'm not sure exactly what the parameters are that he's requesting, whether it's three thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars, you know, we don't know what it's what he's asking for. But um, but you know, in the moment cash shows up in the hand, it can, it can go multiple directions and then rarely ever hits its target. So um, if we can, if we are going to support it and put our name on it, uh, we definitely want to make sure that we maintain a a level of, not necessarily control, but a level that that maintains that we we come out of this uh in a in a positive light, that the city is a support system, right? So.
Yeah, and and whether they, and and I think that we probably, my instinct just tells me that we probably can allow the rental of the the church, but I don't think the city can directly support that rental because then you're mixing church and state and that's probably, you know, we're picking one church over another. If it's just a facility that we're using their auditorium, then that may be something different. But I I would, Eduardo, I would, I would suggest that you get very, and and I, you've de- I'm sure you've dealt with this kind of administrative hassle before, but I would suggest that you get. But I would suggest that you get as specific as you can with, with the, with your proposal, including of the donations that you get, where is it exactly going to go? I mean, in, in what amounts, X percentage to the Emily Shane Foundation, X percentage to whatever. Just so we have a very specific idea. And if we're ever questioned, we, we will have the information as to what was supposed to happen.
Forgive me, but didn't we, didn't we address this in the last meeting? Didn't we ask for a budget so that, that we kind of knew what we were talking about? Did, uh, do we have an idea, Eduardo, of how much money you want or, or?
Yes, may I speak?
Yes.
Hello? Yeah. And I mentioned last time, well, first of all, my proposal was not just for one event, but for a series of 18 events that I want to do to cover a lot of aspects of what goes on in Malibu with, with the local charities. For this, but I, I created this event in coordination with the church, just to have a template. And, and the way we're going to work it, we, we all agree with Emily Shane Foundation, the church and ourselves for our own initiative to split evenly. All the, the revenue from donations. Now, the, the, the the proposal to the city is just to cover expenses that the artists incur into preparing, rehearsing the time they have, you know, to, to get all this together, which was about, you know, like one or $200 per musician. And, and we're talking about five to seven people.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, no, it's just like a nominal fee. So people that participate in, with their talent don't lose money.
Yeah.
That's basically it, you know? And then if there is a support from the city, that we can print programs, basically programs. Because we know that the best possible way to promote is online these days. And, and that's pretty much free. And, and the use of the, the, the logo, if, if the city wants to partner with us in order to make this concert series a wonderful thing for everybody.
Yeah. Um, you know, you know what helped me, Eduardo, is, you know, is to, is to get, and we may have mentioned this last time and whether we did or we didn't. But I, I think that if you can submit to Kristen in an exact, I mean, I, I understand a couple hundred dollars to five or 10 people, not a big deal, but with the city here, we have to be, we have to be really ultra specific so that we know exactly what a dollar amount is and, and, and a list of the things that you're requesting, which including the logo in your, your promotion, us promoting you via the Facebook page and things like that, all of that is, that's all great and that's no problem according to everyone else's comments. But I would like to look at this screen and to see that list so that I'm ultra clear.
Yeah.
We can look at that list and we can say, because right now, if I had that list and I was looking at it, we could probably approve it. We could probably, or at least send it to city council for.
Yeah, it's, it's very, you know, everything else other than the specific amount of money is there. I mean, so let's say that is $900 per concert. Is, is, is that easy enough?
No, I, no, not for the city. And actually, didn't you say you wanted to do 18 concerts?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So that's.
This is only a, this is a proof of concept, this first one, right?
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Okay.
So he's not asking for 18, he's asking for, he wants to, to this one, kind of like what we're doing at the gallery. We want to.
Yeah, right, right, right.
This one thing. So, but it would help me, you know, Kristen, I'll address this to you, but if I can, if I can look at, you know, right, and I, right now I see a call to peace. If I saw that list here from Eduardo that listed everything that he's requesting. So we can look at that and we can say, okay, I'm, I'm totally clear on that. Let's submit it to the city. I mean, that would be the next step, but instead, because we don't have that list, we have to go into December and get that list and it's another month delayed, I'm assuming. So it's, it's Eduardo, it's your, it's, it's a very high priority, if you haven't yet, to get that list to Kristen, the specifics. And, and $900 shouldn't be a guess. It should be exactly what it is you're requesting. If it's 900 or 950, we need to know exactly what that is so that we can submit that.
Okay, no problem.
And, and also, and also to specify, you know, the, the split, the three-way split. And does the church money go, is, is it to a 501(c)(3) or what? Are they all 501(c)(3)'s? Just so we understand where, where the donations would go because we'd be supporting it. Because it would be helpful if the city of Malibu got behind it, I'm sure.
Yes, this, this, this series is going to be only between four and between 501(c)(3)'s organization. And the, this, the percentage split will vary with every place. It's like, you know, if, if we, for example, get the auditorium there where you are and the, this, and the city hall, that would create a completely different set of parameters. Or if, if we, if we play, yeah.
So Eduardo, you're, you're getting donations from a variety of sources. That's monies that's coming into you and you're dispersing those monies among three parties, correct?
Yes, the church, yeah, that's, that's usually against.
Right. So we're not saying, and it's really none of our business, but what we're trying to maintain is that at least we know that, that the monies are, are, are supporting something positive and, and you know, we just have to be diligent about what you put our name on. But you know, but if, if, I, I, I don't think that Barry's saying, we want to know exactly how much money is going to Emily Shane or at, that's really, it isn't, to be honest, not our business. How you collect your donations, but we just want to make sure that we, that we get into bed with someone that is.
It's, it's impossible to predict how much money. Yeah, it's impossible.
I don't, I don't mean cash, cash amount. I mean, the, the third and third and third.
Percentage amount, percentage.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, personally, in this case, it's going to be a third, third, third. And, and, and on the next concert, I mean, I'm planning to book other concerts, but in other, in, in other opportunities, we have 40, 40, 20. In other places, it was 50, 50, depending on the, you know, what the venue is.
Yeah.
So, so I was, I would say that every time that I, there is a booking, I'm going to have to present the numbers and the percentage splits to you. I just, I just wanted to start with this one because this one is booked and it's all, it's all agreed.
Yeah.
And our, and Eduardo, if, if you would put, if you would just put a line under each of the recipients of the money, what they do, the Emily Shane Foundation supports blah, 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 blah. The Church Foundation supports blah, blah, blah. Just so people get a perception if they don't have enough time to talk to you about it, you know, the more information you give, the better.
And maybe suggested donation amount too, like what are you, I mean, I assume that you're going to do suggested donation for this show, $30, whatever.
Because some of us may donate, you know, we, we may want to support it ourselves individually. And I certainly would, you know, it's just a matter of, of knowing, you know, what that is, how that works.
Well, in, in the past, we had like a minimum suggested donation of $25, something like that. And then in some cases, in other occasions, it was $50 or, or, you know, it's like, and, and what, what would that give you? You know, if, if we have a reception afterwards, or if we don't have a reception. And if you get like an album, if you get, you know, a T-shirt, things like that, I mean, it's, it's anyway, I'm going to try to keep it as simple as possible, just, just for the basics. Yeah.
Step back a minute. My understanding is what you were asking the city to pay for is the costs the musicians would have for rehearsal purposes. You're anticipating seven musicians and you which would be, and you're assuming that they would cost a hundred dollars each and then.
Two hundred, I think he said.
No, 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 it was 100, 100 to 200, but you came in with a figure of 900. So I'm assuming the musicians' costs are a hundred dollars each and then there's an additional $200 for ancillary costs. Whatever they might be, guitar picks. Is that, so what you're asking for is $900. Is, is that, and that money would go directly to the musicians, correct?
Yes.
So why are we doing this split if the money is going to the musicians or are we splitting it in thirds, 300, 300, 300?
No, 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 no. No, no. Let me, let me address. So, so Peter, there's, there's two different money pockets that are happening here. Number one is the 900 he's asking for us and those go to the musicians. The separate pocket is donations that he's taking from outside sources to fund the whole event. We're not, he's not asking for that from us. Right. So the, the donations that, whatever pocket that is, the donations that come into that, he's going to take that, disperse it three ways. He's just making us aware of that.
Okay.
But, but. But it makes sense for the city to pay the musicians directly, for example?
Well, the city can, the city can pay the foundation, the foundation can pay the musicians. It's that simple.
If I can, if I can step in for a second.
Okay, guys. Can we stop for one second and let's turn it over to Jesse for a minute, so we can know.
So that exactly what, what Commissioner Jones is talking about is, is what we try to, how we've handled things as far as, so if there's an event, and, and I'll use an example, we have done events where we partnered with an organization to come in and showcase a movie here at city hall, right? And so as a part of that event, because it was a, a cosponsored commission event and it was on city property and we were able to directly pay vendors, stuff like that, we were able to assist in those ways.
Right.
When it comes to money going to an outside organization for an event that is, is not on city property, it's not a, really a, a commission event, the commission can certainly support it and the city can, can certainly offer to do promotion for it, things like that. This, it's a little bit different than partnering with somebody to do an event here on city property, right, where we have control of that stuff. And so that's why we say if, if that, if that were the case, and let's just, for example, say this event were happening at city hall, somewhere in an era where we're not limited by, by COVID, we would partner with them and then we would work to, to pay vendors directly as a part of this cosponsored city event. We do not typically give the money to outside organizations to pay vendors, artists, stuff like that. That's why we're, that's where the city council typically approves stuff like that through the grant fund program. So if the commission wants to make a recommendation in this case to do that, that's essentially what we would do. We would take the commission's recommendation, go to city council and say, hey, the commission would like to, has, has recommended the city support this event in these specific ways.
Yeah. So Eduardo, basically what he's saying is that we, we wouldn't cut a check to your foundation. What we would do in order to support you and to ensure that the artists get the funds that are coming to them, whether it's a hundred dollars or $200, we would, we would probably pay them directly. That's how, that's probably what would happen, right, Jesse?
If approved by the city council, yes.
Right. So if, if approved by the city council, then, then monies that from the city are going to go directly to the artists as opposed to going to your foundation and then you pay the artist. That's the only way that probably we could do it.
That's fine with me. Not a problem.
There you go.
And then what we have to do is to, because we're supporting the event, if we put the logo on, which would be, I think, helpful to you, it's got to be for, from, from our purposes, kind of squeaky clean. In other words, we really have to know what, what, where the donations are going in the sense of, of more information. So we can't be questioned that they found their way into the wrong place. Because we're supporting it. That's, that's the other part of it.
Well, I, they, what, the, 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 the way we operate is we create a report of everything that came in and out and, and it's, it's, it's all going to be documented.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
So we just need, we just need that, that clarification the next time we meet on a list here that, that to Kristen so that she can put this up on the, the screen so we can see all of that stuff. And we can literally make a decision and send that directly to the city council.
And it might be one of those where you do a proposed budget and then the actual budget after the event has happened. So you see, but.
Yeah.
That's.
Eduardo, has you, Eduardo, have you ever done this with a city before?
No. No, I've done it with churches and other organizations. Yeah.
Well, welcome, welcome to the pain.
I'm just going to say, right.
Well, to me, it's, it's no, it's no pain, actually. I mean, you know, whenever we do this, it's, it's fun. It's an experience.
Yeah.
So I, I just wanted to expand it to the, to the point that, you know, the city can have that experience as well. And so, you know, that's, that's my whole purpose.
Yeah, that's great.
We're behind you. We just have to work with such parameters. That's all it is.
That's good.
I just. I can't tell, but all of our hands are tied below the screen. We're, we're on board though, man. We're on board.
Okay. Thank you so much, Eduardo. We're gonna, you know, we'll, we'll advance that then too.
You're welcome. Yeah, I, I'll, I'll send additional information to Christine. No problem.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I gotta go. Thank you. Bye bye.
Very much. Okay. Can we move on to art in public places ordinance? That's Jesse.
Right. Give me just one second here to get this queued up.
Hey, we're running out of time.
We are, and I will, I will start, this item has technically started before the prior to 10:30. So you will have to vote for the next item. However, I'm confident that we, as we get this going here, we'll, we'll move quickly. So art in public places. So I know the commission asked for this to be agendized at last month's meeting. So I wanted to give you just an update on the art in public places ordinance and answer any questions you have. As I know Chair Sharon had mentioned that and was interested in that last month. So if you're not familiar, we do have an art in public places ordinance. And what that ordinance is, 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 came in two parts. The first part is that the ordinance was actually adopted in September of 2014. And it basically has a public art requirement for commercial and multifamily residential development projects. And it has some really specific standards that were mentioned in the staff report and I'm also going to run through quickly. Unfortunately, the, the actual policy, how the, how those, how the art in public places ordinance, the money from that is collected and how the policy was implemented wasn't actually approved until August of 2017. And so in August of 2017, we established these, these implementation guidelines. And those are also included with the, the staff report. But in short, the public art requirements, so basically the requirements for these projects that do qualify, the purpose of it is for the city to acquire and install public art on the project site or an alternative site that the city agrees to equal to at least 2% of the total project cost for the qualifying project. And then if they, the developer can choose, or I should say, the property owner can choose not to put public art on their project in the amount of 2% of the total project cost. They can, in lieu of that, contribute 1% of the total project cost to the city, which would go in a public art, which goes in a public art fund. And so the, the property owner is required to follow the guidelines that are, are within the, that were implemented in August of 2017, which are fairly lengthy and it depends on what option you're going with. In the event that the artist or the owner wants to install public art on their property, there are some specific guidelines for how that has to happen. And there are several approvals that are required, including city council. And of course, the arts commission is required to be involved in that. So I know people are, this is probably the toughest part of this. We have to tell people which projects apply because it is very specific. And the council was very specific on which projects would apply, but essentially it's new commercial or institutional developments exceeding $250,000, which seems like not very much. But they, the, the guidelines for it are very specific. And so it has to be a remodel or construct, reconstruction of existing commercial or institutional development exceeding $250,000. A new multifamily residential development with four more units exceeding $250,000. Or a remodel or reconstruction of existing multifamily residential developments with four more units exceeding $250,000. So if you're not aware, as a commission, there aren't a lot of projects that qualify under that. And so far, since the implementation of this in 2017, we've actually only, and Deputy Director Reyesco can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we've only received funding from one project because there's only been one project that qualified for that. And that was the Whole Foods project, if I remember correctly. And so we have received that one contribution and our balance within the public art fund is $35,683. The final part of this is the, the specific rule, and you, you saw the language above here, but that funding, if we do get it, which we have right now, but if we get additional funding, the requirement is, um, that funding, if we do get it, which we have right now, but if we get additional funding, the requirement is um, it's basically to acquire and install public art. And so that's what it has to be used for. So, um, and I, I wanted to read the exact, um, like I'm pulling up here, I wanted to read the exact language so that you could hear, um, what the exact rules of it are. But the specific language is, um, just one second here. First plan to this chapter may only be used to acquire, place, or install and maintain public art throughout the city. So, um, that's kind of the basic report. I'm happy to answer additional questions if I can. I know that's a lot of info within the two attachments that we sent.
Jesse, Jesse, I would like to, I was around when this came into being, but um, I, I never understood why they had the option of, of two percent if they put up art and one and a cop out and a cop out of one percent if they didn't want to do anything.
Good question.
Obviously, they're gonna go and do nothing and, and pay one percent. Now, I, I, how did that happen? I don't recall.
I, I believe the.
And one other question too, um, who's responsible for maintaining the art once it's up, if they, if they select the first option?
So I believe the reasoning behind that, um, and I don't, I don't know if, if it's specific law or not, but I, I I don't know if the city can just require they make that payment without a, I, that would essentially be like a tax, right? Or, so I, I think that would either have to go to public vote, or there was a legal requirement on why we couldn't do it. So that's why you see the language, say, in lieu of, um, because this is in lieu of that donation, so it's, or in lieu of installation of that artwork. So it's not, uh, it's not a fee per se, I realize it's semantics, it's not a fee, it's not a legal tax or, or, or something that we require as part of the project, because you can choose to install public art. The in lieu of is to allow property owners who just don't want to go through that whole public art process to install it, um, to provide that funding, and then the city, because we believe that, that public art is really important for building community. And, and you know this, every mural you see, it inspires somebody or something, you know, even if it's a
Jesse?
A box down on the corner, so.
Is the, uh, the date, uh, the date approval was granted or date of, of completion? For example, the Nogu property is not listed as having paid anything here, but some of that falls in after two thousand seventeen. Um, and there's been, then there's a bunch of development that's on the table right now.
Right.
In and around City Hall. That looks to me like they're gonna have to either pay one percent or put up two percent worth of art. Is, am I right about that? Or have these things been in the pipeline for so long that they don't have to pay?
Um, I, I don't, I would have to check and see if, if projects are grandfathered in or not, right? If you had a project going on prior to the installation of this that you didn't have to pay. Um, I do know that until they know the total construction cost, cost of the project, which means kind of finalized plans and, and essentially a, a, a relevant cost estimate, they, we can't collect the fee, right? Because the fee is based on that total project cost. Well, if the project isn't fully developed and approved, we don't know what that project cost will be yet.
So there's been only one project that's been approved, and that was Ben Whole Foods, that has gone all the way through?
Well, then that qualifies under those guidelines, which are, are fairly specific, and I will say, you know, you're talking about existing commercial or institutional development that's over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's not a, that's not a a big project, but we don't have lots of new businesses popping up here, right? So.
Actually, we do. There's at least one hotel, possibly another.
Let me say finalized, finalized projects.
And then we also have that rather large office development, uh, on the near City Hall. Which was going to be a shopping mall, is now an office development. My question is, is the two, do we go back to what it was going to be a shopping mall? And, and that's the figure, or now the plans have completely changed, and now it's an office structure with restaurants?
It's, it is the total construction cost of the project. That's the exact language. So, um, it does have to be, it does, it does have to be the project that's being built, right?
That's the question.
So yes.
Based on the project that is
Correct.
To be built, and people are gonna walk around inside.
Correct.
Barry has question.
Um, I have two questions. One is, um, how is this actually administered? Does the building department, are they, are, is that on a checklist so it doesn't get missed? And the second question is, how does one unlock this budget if and what is the way that art is chosen, and how does it actually practically work? Assuming you have enough of a fund.
Yeah, if you, if you have the, the staff report, you can see as exhibited A, and it's, it's the final page of the staff report, you can actually see the flow chart for what happens, and it basically gives you option one or option two, and then there's the planning phase. Um, if you choose to go and install public art, there goes through a whole art review process, which is outlined in the, uh, the implementation guidelines, which are, are that same attachment, and just up, if you were to scroll up the pages above that, you would see what that process is. Um, but essentially the applicant would coordinate with uh, the Community Services Department, and then submit a conceptual art plan for review by the Cultural Arts Commission. And then the commission will give, will receive feedback on everything from the art, the artist, the budget, and then that final art plan and budget, uh, provided it doesn't require any, uh, planning approvals or anything like that, which essentially the hope would be that they already have that, uh, would go to city council for final approval. If they choose to go the in lieu contribution and pay one percent, essentially they receive a notification of that, or of the ordinance requirement, and, and a copy of the guidelines, and then a preliminary calculation is determined based on that estimated total construction cost, and then they make that payment before a building permit is issued. So, yes, there's checklist for that.
Is, is there a way that we are notified that the payment is made? It's one thing if they're gonna do art, but if we don't know there's a fund or how much is in the fund, is there a way to, to formally advise the commission that the, the payment has been made or is about to be made?
Yeah, I think, I think as we, we've discussed budget, um, several times over the, the last couple of meetings, our goal would be to bring the commission updates on this as we get them, or during our budget updates, and make sure that you're aware of this. So if, if we wanted to spend money on, on a specific art project, and we knew what we, we wanted to spend it on, we can take that request to city council for approval and, and assuming it's related to public art, we would we'd be good to go.
I have just a quick question, Graham. When we were talking about that one thing in Whole Foods, where we were gonna have that big public, um, uh, mural, remember we was, is, is that part of what, would that have been come from this fund here? Is that what that was?
It's my understanding that that, that would qualify.
Cause I don't know.
I, I, I think the, at least I think the intent, or I think the hope would be that it would be more, um, permanent. And I know we were talking about going through, there was a couple of different ideas we had for designing that, uh, I know we were gonna hang stuff on the fencing or the wall or paint it. There was a lot of different ways to go. Um, but I would say as long as it's more of, of, at least semi-permanent in nature, it would probably be approved, considering you're the subject matter experts on this. Um, just as long as I, I don't think the intent is to, to do something for a month or two, right? And I don't mean an art, art exhibition, but those are things we do in, in the short term.
Then doesn't Whole Foods get off the hook? Because if they were installing the art themselves, they would be paying two percent. And here they don't install it, we install it, and they end up paying one percent.
Yeah, that's my question, which is, I have to just, my original question was, um, the in lieu payment, Jesse, is basically getting them off the hook. That's why it's discouraging people, in fact, from installing public art. The in lieu payment should also be two percent. So that they, they, if they do this, they still pay the same amount. They don't get off the hook. And secondly, my question was who pays to maintain the art once it's installed?
If it's, if it's on the property owner, if the, if the owner chose to install it on their property, they would maintain it. If it's not, we, if in something that we installed on public property, or in another location that, that we are essentially purchasing the art through this fund, we would maintain it.
So, so are we as a commission able to re- recommend to the city that we change the in lieu payment to two percent?
No, uh, that's not, well, I mean, you can recommend anything you want to your individual accounts members. I should say that to start. I don't, I don't, you could, you could recommend whatever you want to them. Um, I, I don't, I don't know the specific, I, I just, it's been several years now, four years since we did it, but I know that that was specific, and the reason for that is, is we had to, we can't require them to make a payment. Right? And that's why the contribution was lower than that, was if you're not gonna install public art, which there are plenty of people that would rather um, install public art at two percent of their project cost and give the city one percent, I believe it or not, that's just the, the reality of the game, especially after you've been through the whole permitting process and, and commissions and stuff like that. So, uh, I don't want to say there is nobody that would choose to do that, but I think that there are, there are, uh, commercial properties, buildings that understand the importance of public art, right? And so if you're not going to install it yourself, we're going to get money and, and, and in lieu of contribution, and we're gonna find a place to install it. As best we can. So I hear what you're saying, Graham, and, and I, I, like I said, I don't know if it was a specific legal requirement and why we can't just require the in lieu of payment. If I recall, it was related to something like, oh, it's a, a permit fee or a tax that requires um, a certain vote or, or something along those lines. So this was the quickest way out of it.
Yeah, I don't remember either. So I was hoping you did.
Well, I know that was the gist of it. I just don't, I don't wanna, I don't quote me on the specific language, but I do know there is a very specific reason for that.
Jesse, the, the advantage of the one percent or the in lieu payment is then the city can choose where to put the art. It doesn't necessarily have to be on the property.
Can we create like wish lists, like we will, you know, what, if we get this amount of money, we would really love to, you know, create this mural or this, you know, statuary or something like.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you have thoughts or ideas on, on what you would like to, to install, like a specific project, we would, we would vet that. We would bring it to the commission to discuss and decide. Um, very similar to the conversation was happening during the last item. These items aren't brought to the commission to stall, delay, anything. It's to get in, is to investigate and discuss in public and get the commission's feedback on items that you're, you know, like I said, subject matter experts on. So yes, we would go through that process, and then we would send it to city council for approval.
So Jesse, does that, am I right in assuming that we then have thirty five thousand, whatever it was, dollars?
Correct.
To recommend for public art to be placed anywhere we want?
Correct. Uh, I wouldn't say anywhere you want. I would say
My front yard.
I will not get into the big clay issue of, there was a whole permitting issue with, you know, putting something up that's super high, right?
Does the, if we were to suggest the acquisition of a piece of sculpture by whatever means, um, let's say they give it, we install it. Does it have to be on public land, or if we had a private company and they said, uh, yeah, we'd love to have that, and we say, okay, we will pay to install it, the artist is giving it.
I don't believe there's a specific requirement that it, it has to go on city property. Um, I do think if the city were to use that in lieu of contribution to purchase art, it would need to be something where um, if we're going to use that money and put something on, on private property, that there is the ability for the public to be able to go and, and view the art, right? So if, and I'm, as an example, if HRL was able to secure a sculpture, but nobody can get through the security gate, well, the city's not going to pay for that, right? So it's, I think it's something that has to be, has to, the public has to have the ability to see it and view it and enjoy it.
But if it were at Tranqus Market, for example, center of the parking lot, uh, or elsewhere, that would might, might qualify.
Yeah, I was actually just reading here, I, I, to make sure I don't believe that it has to be on city property.
It would have to be in the, within the city limits.
I, I would say yes. I, I don't know that specifically in here, but I would certainly say that would be something we would the city council wouldn't want. They would, the first question they would have is, hey, this isn't even in city limits, why would we put it here? So I would say that's a.
The reason I'm asking these questions is thirty five thousand dollars is a very small amount of money for public art, but it is in the ballpark for installing public art. So if we could get it for free, and install it for twenty thousand dollars, that might be something that worked.
I think we should look at that, you know, for the next thing, if you have things in mind, I think we should bring that back to the table, know, having this information. You know, at another time, there's a public, you know, or we, you know, just keep this in mind. But it is ten forty-five, I want to, uh, I think we need to go to staff updates and wrap it up by eleven if we can, guys. Is that right? Does anyone have anything else about this?
I have to leave now, actually. I'm sorry.
I actually should leave as well.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I gotta go. Bye, everybody.
Understand, understand.
Thank you. Thanks, Jesse. Thanks, Chris.
I know we have a, I know we have an additional item regarding, uh, the commission's work plan and updates to the mid-year work plan, um, based on the conversation regarding wanting to, to discuss, I, I think Commissioner Holdman mentioned, you know, presenting, I apologize for the scrolling here, new items um, for city council consideration in the second half of the year. Budget funding wise, we would probably want to include those in the request on the commission work plan. So we
Right.
Deputy Director Riesgo, uh, can we, do we have the ability to bring this back at next month's meeting and still meet our deadline?
Yes.
So we could bring that together as long as the, we could bring that next month, as long as the commission understands you'll have to make a decision at that point, um, because we will be taking it to city council, uh, in January.
Okay.
So we can, we can.
Prioritize this, this one here.
It would go to old business next time, so it wouldn't up the list.
Okay. Sounds good.
Great.
All right. So is that under commissioner reports, comments, and inquiries, or is that where we are? Staff updates? Oh, okay.
Yes, we essentially, assuming the commission, there's a consensus from the commission to continue that item, uh, because of the late time.
Yes.
We would, we would bring that back. Now the item five B.
Would you, could we, um, if people had ideas, could they send them to Kristen to circulate to the commission before the meeting? So in other words, even before the, the agenda comes out?
Yes, and I, I do want to say, I apologize, I, I should have caught, um, I should have caught this as we were going through it. Um, item five A, we were supposed to go to item five A first, which was the mid-year activity report, so that would be the item we are continuing to five B, um, which was my fault for not catching that. So at any rate, we would continue item five.
Not my fault? Did I say that? Did I go?
Yeah, and I, I thought that was the case. That's why you saw me scroll through the, the, I thought we had the presentation backwards, so I scrolled past it to start the next one. Backwards, so that was my fault. Not catching it too. We're, we're running multiple things here behind the scenes.
Fired, fired.
Okay.
So we, I believe we are on to staff updates now.
Okay, so, so, all right, so should we go to staff updates?
Yes, I only have a couple staff updates, nothing too crazy. Um, we are installing art at the Michael Lannan Center. It's called a window into me. It's art provided by Our Lady of Malibu School. That artwork will be up, um, just in the first week of December, and we'll continue to have it up through January. So um, we have a really good working relationship with, um, the art teacher at Our Lady of Malibu School, and so we're happy to provide that nice children's artwork, uh, in the center. Um, we wanted to let the commission know that there's a Brown Act training. It's very exciting stuff. Um, on December tenth, it's a virtual Zoom meeting at one thirty. If you could let us know, if you could, if you can attend that, that would be great. If you can't, there will be a link on the city's website for you to view that, uh, Brown Act training at a later date, that highly encourage that some of the new commissioners attend that, just so we're all in the up and up and, and know what's happening. And then, um, we also wanted to talk about our December meeting. I know a few, a few of you guys left, but, um, it is December twenty eighth. Uh, we kind of brought this up at the last meeting. But if, if we're in town, if we're not in town, if we want to reschedule.
I feel like we probably, since I totally messed up and we didn't do this, I skipped over the Malibu mid-year report. We kind of would be good if some of us are in town, if we could do it, maybe, or move it up.
Yeah, we've rescheduled it in previous years.
Yeah.
For the commission, I don't know what, what everyone's schedule's like, but I know that, that week's always tough for.
Yeah.
Some of the commission.
I, I'm available to do it if, if anybody else wants to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't have any specific plans, but we could always, it's on the twenty eighth, we could always move it to the, say, the twenty first before Christmas, if you wanted to, or something like that.
Can we do that? Is that possible to move it?
That is actually one of the dates we have available. Fortunately, our Parks and Recreation Commission canceled their meeting, and that's typically the day they do it. So we believe that date would work.
Let's do that. Let's do that.
At the same time or a different time. It's up to you.
Do we all have to wear Christmas hats? Is that or anything?
Yes.
It's not in the commission bylaws.
Right.
Let's do that.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Same time. I think it'd be, just keep it the same time. It'd be simpler.
Yep.
Girlie.
Just get whoever we can.
And we'll let the commission, we'll let the other commissioners know and, and if there's a problem or, or an issue with that date and we can't get a quorum, we'll.
Yeah.
What we can do by rescheduling, and then we will, as we get closer to the actual meeting date that's on the calendar, we'll post a, a cancellation for that.
Great.
Good. So that's the twenty first of December?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Do we vote on that or is that, we just do it?
We just need a consensus from the commission. There, there's a quorum here and a consensus from the three, so, uh, but we will let the other commissioners know. Um, I do agree, we, we, we will need to address the, um, the commission work plan stuff, so.
Okay. And, okay, what, do we move on? Commissioner Reports, Comments and Inquiries? Anybody?
I move re-adjourn.
Feature agenda items, same.
Oh, sorry.
That's it.
Oh, would you put on, but, but could you put on the agenda, uh, uh, additional, um, projects that we wanna bring to the.
That will, that will be under the, the work plan item. So that's your time.
Oh.
It's the time to bring that stuff up and, and we can include that all together as one item.
Great.
Good.
Great.
Okay, then can we adjourn the meeting?
Just need a second, a, a motion in a second.
Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn.
A second, 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 second.
Father Commissioner, uh, sorry, Vice Chair Holland with the motion and Commissioner Lawrence with the second. Uh, Vojkov, Voj, Vice Chair Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Hardeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
And Commissioner Jones is gone, so, um, motion carries.
Great.
All right.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a wonderful night.